Hi, Cherie. We are calling to order at seven oh four. And would somebody like to read the landing knowledge?
True.
Terrific.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than ten thousand years. We honor with gratitude the land itself, the descendants of these native peoples who are still here.
Thank you, right? And so next is approval of the agenda, a draft agenda was in the packets and I think we each have hard copies here. Were there any? Questions or proposed amendments to the agenda?
No.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I have motion to approve the agenda.
Ready, moves a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? No one? The agenda as proposed is approved. Next, we have approval of meeting minutes and the August twelfth meeting minutes were in the packs. Has everybody had a chance to look at those, I assume, and are there any questions or concerns or proposed edits to the minutes?
Really looks good to me. I like the more succinct form.
They do get shorter, don't they?
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion for the minutes.
Moved, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the minutes from August twelfth are approved. Next, we're looking at meeting dates and the upcoming meeting dates. Does anybody have a conflict next month?
Yeah, I will miss the next one.
The fourteen, right?
Fourteen.
Uh, I can join but um, far from remote.
All right, well, it sounds like we'll.
I'm likely to miss entirely, I might be able to zoom in, but I'm gonna be in an area where I don't know my reception is very good. Okay, assume I know.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like we'll have a quorum. So. I don't know if we need to talk about November at this point, maybe just see where we get for October. And tonight, all right.
Actually, just noting that November falls on Veterans Day, I don't know if the commission makes all days.
Um, no, I think we've already kind of heard, I don't have my list of all my meetings this year, but I think we've already offset that. At the beginning of the year, I do our regular meeting and then look at the holidays and then offset it, so I'm not sure there's conflict if there is, well.
Okay, then I'll say I'm not sure I know where it got offset to, so we might need a reminder about that.
Meaning we're not scheduled to meet on the eleventh?
It might be a different day.
Yeah, I think we meet in November, but I think at the beginning of the year, we set a different day.
Okay.
I have it in my office, so we'll go over that tonight, just to be thorough. Don't hate to move it if we are, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes. All right. Well, then, next on the agenda, public hearings, we have none, I assume, for right now. Public comments, we have nobody in the room for public comments and we do not accept online public comments. I don't know if any other comments were sent to your office from without.
Staff hasn't received them, other than the commissioners' comments.
Right, right.
Agenda items.
Um, next would be the report from city council liaison.
City council liaison, I just came from the candidate forum, oh, Robert Rhodes' house.
Okay.
Guessing so. He's running a campaign.
All right, well, then we will pass that agenda item and so next we're onto all business. And the first element of all business is the climate element, comp plan amendment discussion with Cascadia. Do we have Cascadia online?
Uh, we did not, by the time we did the draft agenda, we also went over the the anticipated timeline for twenty twenty five. Looked at the scope of work, looked at the budget and found that if we hold a public hearing and a recommendation of planning commission, we should reserve their budgeted remaining PC. Uh, meeting availability for that.
Okay, well, all right.
And then we're asking them if we can do four touches at city council, so it's, we're getting up against the maximum for the contract.
That makes sense, well, I, we do have their proposed amendment, so we should still plan on talking about them. Uh, they were in the packs, it looked like, from what I could tell, all of the points that we discussed where we wanted adjustments made to the draft plan, they had made adjustments, we had the fact changes version and the clean version. Uh, now the question is whether people had feedback on any of that, or whether those amendments tracked uh what we're hoping to capture, or whether there's any remaining issues to bring up. We could do like we did last time and go page by page through the whole thing, or now that we've done that, uh, hopefully at least once or twice on our own and at the meeting, we could just kind of go high level section by section and just see, did anybody have any remaining uh, questions or concerns or points to discuss uh, or proposed amendments? And we do have um, sent by email, uh, Commissioner Drew had shared uh, some comments about uh, some of the background data and do we need some policies around uh, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions with respect to air travel, is there something we should consider or pose there? Uh, so I don't know if anybody had thoughts on that, but we could certainly discuss that during the course of the discussion as well. But what would people prefer? Should we just start high level and go section by section, or would people prefer a different approach?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
Start at the top and just.
Yeah, but maybe not go through the whole thing, but.
Maybe just where the edits are.
Would you be able to bring it up on screen?
We are testing marks here, you did very well with getting this on screen.
Um, yeah, no, it's a challenge because this entire contraption is not designed for us to pull up our personal drives, even though I know there's a way, so I had to sign in, not not mess it up. E my, email myself my PowerPoint and hope that I could open as attachment, but I I don't have access to my screen.
If we, if we uh, sign in, can you give us permission?
I can hear, yeah, so uh, somebody else's laptop.
Let me get to our meeting. Uh, that would have come like what an hour ago, saying it's gonna start, what's it called, a panel?
Um, or just the packet from the city website.
I know, but I have to get into the Zoom session to share it.
Is it the one that comes from City of Lake Forest Park?
Yeah.
Host invited, okay, here we go.
And then you have an audio issue, but it should.
Join webinar. Please join that.
I could bring it.
Uh, yeah, but I, Shereen, oh, is this, oh, that's you.
Yeah. So whatever, it was share, but what's that?
Oh, you're not able to keep Shereen up and share, or wait.
No, uh, the the big box will go to a small box and then the whatever document that you bring up, I give you permission to share and that will show the majority of the screen.
Have you been able to get in that?
Yeah, I'm in, um, I just need to. Here we go, share my screen.
Hey.
Hi, two times. Okay, I think my speaker also doesn't scream this, but let me share and change.
Should be a panelist with permission, so there you go.
There we go.
Well, terrific.
Awesome, thank you, Maddie.
You're so welcome.
Thanks for problem solving.
You know, if I can't do this, I'm not really sure what good I am. Okay, so I was just asking before we went down that road, should we just look for where there are edits since we've already reviewed everything and just review the edits?
I think that works if people are okay with that and we breeze through them.
Is that good for you, Cherie? Oh, we don't need my camera.
And it did look like, I'll just note, some of the edits look like, you know, they had made comments like this was in response to public comment, or this was in response to the comments received, so might be good.
Um, do you tell me, I'm just.
I think start here, this is great.
Hey, I I will, this sounds great.
Looks good to me too, but. Any other concerns? All right, let's move on.
You good, Yanni?
Yeah, you just zoomed that in a little bit, I'm not sure, you know, I've got my screen also, but just to.
Sure.
Just a second.
Focus my controls like that?
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I gotta, now I gotta go back to the one that changed.
Zoomed you to the end.
There we go.
Okay, perfect. Great. All right, so three varieties we're good with. It's like CE two point two is the next one.
Okay, oh, Yanni, were you ready?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, two point two was just changing heritage to exceptional, to track our verbiage that we use.
Good, comes up?
Yep.
Okay, CE three, four.
I think we did talk about this briefly, just to kind of give an explanation, looks reasonable to me, but I don't know.
Same.
Yeah.
All right. CE four point four.
I think this tracks with our discussion last meeting.
Right, looks fine to me.
Oh, and then there's four point five right after.
Oh, sorry, everyone's ready to.
This also tracks with what we discussed.
Moving on.
That's weird, oh, added. Yep.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So. I'll, maybe I can discuss when we start this, because I, rather than have something specific, you know, there's lots of things that I might change, but just the whole total goal about decreasing greenhouse gas emissions by fifty percent by twenty thirty. That's four years and a few months. And. I just, there's a lot of talk about vehicle mile, vehicle miles traveled and everything's very sanitized, the language. And I think it's important to remember that when we talk about that, talking about those vehicle miles are the way people earn their livings and trips to the doctor and trips to, you know, uh, take kids to soccer or orchestra or whatever it is. And also, I think that if the city is very proactive in trying to reach that goal, I I actually do think that it will have a disparate impact on rural income communities, because uh, I just think it will, uh. So I know, there's really, I don't know. I don't agree with that goal, uh, there's nothing that, you know, but anyway, I just think that it's and I, and I hon, and I honestly don't know how many people in Lake Forest Park would agree with that goal and if if you ask them, if you kind of got to the nitty gritty of how that goal is going to affect their daily lives, and I noticed in the, in all of the pub, public engagement, there was never a question like, okay, this is the goal of how much greenhouse gas we need to decrease. Which of these things are you willing to do, you know? Not take your kid to soccer, not drive to work, you know, uh, and so I honestly, I didn't think, not being blunt about that, I don't think is really fair, and I think that if you were to actually tell, you know, kind of hold the neighbors and say, hey, you know, fifty percent is gonna have to go when four and three months, that's, I don't think that lots of people would be very happy about that, no. That's my perspective of.
I think the other thing too to surface is Johnson mail, did you, did you have a chance to see that before? And I think he was kind of striking on that same overarching piece and saying not only what you're saying, but even one step above that, we're maybe not using the right numbers to apply that, what we can actually affect. Because of saying we don't have control of the air traffic and pass through traffic in our city. So really are going to affect that kind of changes, is based on kind of a, uh, maybe wrong data.
Right, but and. But those numbers are not city imposed, right, are they state imposed, or are they county imposed?
So I think he was saying that like the current, I can pull it up, did you guys already have some?
Yeah, yeah.
I think he was saying the numbers that have been posted as like, it's currently this, somebody want to reduce to that and say, you're counting people who pass through and counting their traffic, you know, activity, which is something beyond our scope too, so. I think that those are the companion pieces, if if we agree with what John said, then we consider what you're saying, it it doesn't seem like maybe an item that you do have a lot of control over without creating equity issues and and even if it's anywhere, I still don't understand how we would legislate that.
So I guess my question is, who is putting air travel in the pie? Is it city or is it county or is it state?
County consultants.
Yeah, yes, it's data that they pulled to help develop the plan for.
But didn't we discuss before, Mark, wasn't there something, was that like a state or a regional expectation that we had to allocate some portion of the air travel to the overall mix, like I thought there was some formula that we didn't pick.
But that is connected, it's consistent, and King County and Puget Sound Regional Council.
That's it, Puget Sound Regional Council, yeah. I think the point John made, you know, to to Maddie's point is, and I think it is building on your point, Barrett, is that even if we stopped all like driving in the city from people who live here, it wouldn't move the needle fifty percent on our emissions if that's how we're calculating. But I guess that, I mean, the question is, I don't even know, do we have a policy on fifty percent? I thought that was already set by the city, I didn't think that was before us today.
The awkwardness was the Climate Action Plan was adopted before the policy of this element.
Ah, okay, so who has set that fifty percent target, wasn't that adopted by, was that adopted by the council already?
This point in the chain is everybody but federal and us.
Ah, okay.
So it's uh, at every level, King County, uh, Kenneway planning policies, the the Climate Commitment Act, legislation in Olympia, Puget Sound Regional Council, regional plans, Vision twenty fifty. It's, it's all of that, all the work that K four C is doing. And so it's pitched up and then we hire Cascadia to do the wedge analysis and model it specific to the city of Lake Forest Park, as everybody else says the same thing. And then we adopt our little share of uh, or buy-in of that policy.
How would you actually legislate or backfire a little too, I think I'm kind of curious, like it's something to say, let's reduce, but what are the mechanisms that?
The mechanism before us is this policy element that received the grant for, but it's at the policy level. The action item level is the Climate Action Plan already adopted by council, that's. Yeah, that was, yeah, and that's more of a reflection of funding and.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I'd offer just a slightly different perspective, being, working for a public agency myself. It is very common to have, what I'll just say, our aspirational goals that kind of put a marker up there that shows, you know, ideally, that's where people get to. And often, they're not met, I'm not saying that's a great thing, I'm saying that's very common. And what I see in front of us are a bunch of policies that say encourage, implement, participate. We're not recommending as a commission, you know, right regulations to limit people's driving. That's not what we're saying. So it's a little, I mean, to me, as somebody who actually used to work on climate issues specifically, it's, you know, some of it's kind of dissatisfying because we're not really taking very meaningful steps, and I don't mean Lake Forest Park, I mean the region, it's like little things here and there. I like some of these policies, they they can help us get the city to reduce some of its, you know, emissions. And we can encourage people, whether it's through, you know, energy efficiency and things like that, and buildings and all that. So I guess I just don't, maybe it's just because of my professional experience, but I don't get too caught up in the fact that we have this goal that's likely unreachable and practical, you know, ways like, I mean, I think you're totally right, or like if we're really gonna get there, we have to like change personal behavior a lot. What we can do as a small city is help educate our community, try to provide better options for things like carpool, public trans, energy efficiency in buildings and all that. And guess what, we're not gonna meet that goal.
So I'm just gonna sort of, so if if it's not attainable and we all agree that, you know, then why are we pushing that at all? I mean, especially if we're talking about what these kinds of things being just, I I mean. So then, so then.
It still nudges us in that direction, and that's why. Instead of saying, we're not gonna set a goal, forget it, we're not gonna do anything. The point is, we as an entire region, if we could actually achieve some meaningful reductions, that will make a difference, that will be really helpful, and the way that this stuff comes down from the state is it can be your part, you can do your part, you can do your part to each city, right? So, and I'm, so I'm not at all, you know, kind of uh, disagreeing with your perspective, I'm just trying to provide from a public agency employee, like this is not that that unusual, and you know, some cities like, you know, Seattle can have a much bigger impact than we can. Even by their city fleets, their city buildings, their city operations. We're expected to kind of articulate that we have a role and we're gonna try to do some things. And it's not very satisfying. And we're kind of expected to put something down as recommended policies. Not super satisfying, but that's, and that's just, that's, that's my view, so I didn't really, I didn't get caught up in that because I've seen those things.
The, so the thing is, it it at least places on the right track, well, whether or not, that's right, that's subjective, but it places on the track towards that direction versus not doing anything, which is the fear of many client side, climate scientists, scientists have about, you know, if we continue over the cliff, then there's no, there is no weekend.
Yeah, so it sounds like, you know, there's kind of an expectation from from the state and the county and the regional policies um, as well as from the council, um, which has adopted, you know, an actual plan already. And we also saw the feedback, I think, in in the community survey, we saw the survey results, which Cascadia shared that, you know, come across pretty loud and clear that community members here that we're representing want us to have some policies and actions that focus on uh, greenhouse gas emission reduction. So I think the action item here isn't, you know, to revisit the target, which isn't in the policies, but really to pressure test whether these draft policies are the ones that we think are appropriate to recommend, or whether there's any that we think aren't. Um, so I think if we, if we focus on that in this meeting and and surface any concerns with any of the policies that maybe need to be revisited or revised, that might be the best use of the the time that we have today.
But I would hope that the city takes that approach, right, to the community, like the, here's our, here's what we're what what we want to accomplish, and we we acknowledge that it's not as easy as it or making it seem.
Yeah, and your point is well taken, we got into mandating, you know, these hard choices, you know, I think that would provoke a very different response from the community, would have saw a very different response and said, hey, you know, the city is gonna make your ability to drive your car.
Even though that is a, that is a, you know, published stated goal.
Yeah, reducing car trips, for sure.
Uh, yeah, it's a hard mandate, it's sort of like we're more for one housing in our community, but we can't.
There's a lot of difficult, it's difficult to balance those two worlds.
So if we come back to CE five point three on the legislative agenda edit, are there any concerns with this edit? That Cascadia is recommending?
No.
So I I I do want to say that a lot of these wording is participate, recommend, it's not, there's nothing in there that is mandatory, and I think that's the part where, um, you know, as a resident, um, I feel like, yes, I want to go towards these things, but I think that it would be really hard to make people do anything, really, uh, you know, we just have a wide variety of things happening in our city. We've got older people, we've got, you know, uh, moms that are taking kids to to practices and plays and and all of these other activities, um, I, you know, to encourage like carpooling and that type of stuff, I think that's where, you know, uh, that's attainable, you know, it's like if you can think of a way to carpool with your neighbor, or if you're going to the store, you know, you might ask your neighbor across the street, do you need anything, I'm gonna go to Safeway, I can pick something up for you. I think that's where we can cut down some of the admission and and car usage. So, but a lot of these wordings in here, it doesn't, it doesn't point towards you must do this or we're gonna take your car away from you, I mean, there's like no consequences, right? So, um, i- if you want to reward people, maybe, I I don't know, maybe there's a system that we can reward people for how many carpools they've done for the month, I, you know, I, to make it be an incentive, incentive, instead of um, a uh, I don't know, like, you know, pointing your finger at them and saying that, you you know, you're, you're, you're wasting a trip. I I think that that's wrong.
Cherie, I kind of feel like you're saying like the existence of this in this document is maybe just to influence a culture of conservation versus actually code language that you know, is a, is a stick to the community versus a carrot. Uh, and I also wonder if some of this, I I I hear your point, it just feels like virtue signaling in here, because it doesn't feel like something legislates. But I also wonder if having it in here actually helps us qualify for certain brands, you know, like we'll never compete for a certain brand if we don't indicate that we have this care, you know, about the possibility of having cultural conservation, you know, if we don't have laws that ban it. So, but I think you're right, it'd be good to be careful when it comes to a funding, actual code language.
And the reminder, this effort is policy.
But it's not, it's not what government, nobody's.
It informs future decisions by everybody, and we only have control over certain decisions, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I don't think we're gonna be able to take this out, and so I just wonder if people, yeah, yeah.
If there's a minor edit in five point five here, striking in the city at the end, then in five point six, streamline instead of support, any, uh, any concerns regarding these changes? Okay. Six point two. Minor change here, support expansion instead of expand, any concerns here on six point three?
And to Cherie's point, the language changed, we had a long conversation about changing the language that seemed that you replace it in implementation versus policy, policy, yeah.
No concerns. Anything on six point three or six point four, any concerns or?
I hope that if we can develop whole language, it involves not having actually blocking sidewalks and other things that may have a nuisance.
That's a different issue, that's the fine share, the screener share, don't get me started.
I know, I'm getting, it's. I know, I'm getting, it's, I, I'm reminding myself, this isn't a rule, it's just a. Okay, uh, six point, where are we, I'd say, or?
I think we just looked at six point three and six point four.
I. I'd be willing to let go, my opinion is not point three, or right now.
So let's go to six point six, this is. To move on, town center. Seems non-substantive. Six point seven, we had a lot of discussion on at the last meeting. And I think this is the direction where we. Discussed going.
This one is the one I could really worry about, because as. Having just gotten back from San Francisco, where you could pay nine dollars a day to park your car downtown. Uh, it really becomes a pay to play situation, and I think that's structurally problematic. Because we're saying people with money can buy their access to all the conveniences, and everyone else is gonna be. Forced. Walk or bike or, you know, take these, you know, greenhouse gas reducing activities, but if you've got enough money, you can. Do whatever you like, so I, I fundamentally don't even want that. Uh, in this language.
I don't even think that it's very applicable to our city, because where, where would that be? Where would they put?
We're one of America's searchers and for parking, you know, parking lot. The city can start charging for parking.
Right, right, do that now, stay on track, right?
I'm just saying, they've turned it into a paid parking lot.
Yeah, this policy will.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So the question merited is asking, where is the city, like, are they gonna charge for parking outside of the school, or? Outside of the park?
But this is saying, s- study. So. I guess I don't see the, the issue, with the benefit of studying them, that points out that really, you know, that really. Clearly the good and the bad of some of these choices, and some of them are, can do just totally shoot down.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I think we compromised on study, I was in the camp of, I didn't like this in here at all, um, but I was fine if we modified.
Fair, I'll let it go. Seven point one?
Yeah.
I hear some thoughts that maybe that might not be something that we wanna consider. Some hesitancy. Are we looking for a solution to a problem that we don't have? Does anyone really complain about off-street parking areas of driver for? Increased parking usage?
No.
I don't think so. I can't say what the council will do, but I'd be like, why would it be even bother?
Well, I, I think if you wanna make money, you know, for the city, that's one way to do it. To charge for parking, but I, I don't think that that's a good idea. With the people that we have here. Um, I, I certainly wouldn't like it. But, I mean, if that's how you increase funding for different things, um, I can see where, if you pay a small amount. Uh, that could add up.
I think though, if I may. You want these policies to be realistic. And for Lake Forest Park, not for Seattle. Not for minor Kenwood. So put your energies on those things that you think are relevant to Lake Forest Park, because otherwise, if you throw everything into the kitchen sink. Or everything into your pot for dinner. You may not get anything out that you really want to enjoy. And you get questioned about, well, why are you including these things here if it's really not reflective of the values of Lake Forest Park? You think charging people for off-street parking on Lake Forest Park is a winner? And I would suggest.
Can we strike the whole thing, and then that just goes over to council without it there, or do they see?
Yeah, we have the right to strike it, if that's the consensus of the commission, these are at the end of the day. What we want to make is policy recommendations.
And I would offer that the more concrete your policy recommendations are, that fit the values of Lake Forest Park. The more likely that as a whole, it will be treated as a very good work product. If you start throwing things in there that aren't reflective of the values of Lake Forest Park, or even practical within Lake Forest Park. That's a little relooking all of it.
Yeah, to me, the parking thing strikes me as like. To the point, like, if you are a. Location where lots of people want to drive, because they're all gonna come, because they all wanna go to the theater downtown, or they all wanna go to Pike Place Market or something. Charging for parking. Is a disincentive to single occupancy vehicle, it encourages you to take mass transit. To the point, Lake Forest Park. To my knowledge, there aren't major destinations where people from outside of our community are coming into the community and driving. Where this would be, you know, a significant deterrent, somebody's going to the.
Gonna bait me, my girl.
And now.
I mean, Sam.
You know, people are going to pick up their kids at school, which they're only doing if they need to pick them up in the car, they might be going and parking at town center, but. This doesn't influence that, because it's private property, so we can't make them charge at town center, where else are we going that you're parking on city property? So I would be supportive of striking.
I, I should, I should, anybody feel differently about that?
You two, you two worked on this. And so I wanna hear your opinions as well, because I don't wanna.
Oh, I didn't have strong feelings about this, I just, I'm just not afraid of studying things. And I'm not sure I have a perfectly clear view of what might ever be possible with Forest Park, but I'm not wedded to this, so. I mean, I, I think I, some, I find some irony, and hear a lot of people complain about how. You know, there's this. You know, things like parking minimums, and there's, oh, there's just no place to park, and now we're saying there's really not an issue. I, I don't know, I, I, I hear mixed signals, whether it's about money, or it's about your own neighborhood getting crowded. So, I think there's some. Little bit of, you know, kind of wanting it both ways here, but I'm fine with striking this, I don't really have a strong feeling of.
What if we kept it? Open-ended though, steady policy alternatives to reduce vehicle. Uh, travel, it, it strikes the, the parking. Part of this, I can't, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't read.
But the proposal would be, we just kind of strike all of it and leave it as study policy alternatives to produce vehicle travel.
That's pretty vague though.
Yeah, I personally think there's plenty of other stuff to study, like, how do we get pathway, you know, the policy right above it, how do we get connected? Pathways, I feel like we have enough work to do to, to Councilmember Leo's point. I'd rather signal the council, like, let's get the other stuff done that the community by and large. Really agrees on, and let's not be a loophole that says. Oh, like, let's leave this aside, because look, commission said we should study policy alternatives to reduce vehicle travel. When a lot of the vehicle travel in Lake Forest Park, frankly, based on our population. Isn't about Lake Forest Park residents, it's about all pass-through traffic on Ballenger. Like twenty, it's, so, to me, it just, it's the. There are things we might do to reduce, you know, um, speeding through our community, but. I'd rather not spend seventy dollars on this at this point, given the fact that we are a thoroughfare. And I, I think we could have more success studying or working on things like safe streets and safe highways.
So should we just vote?
I would, yeah, I, I vote to take it out.
So. Maddie's moving to take it out, so their second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I, I.
Bye.
All right, all those post. We've struck CE six point seven. All right, so next we have six, or seven point one. This looks like just a, no call. Minor thing. Seven point two, oh, I guess there is the strike through on it, okay. Seven point two, are we okay to move on from these both?
I'm okay. Ready?
Eight point one just looks like a reference correction. Eight point two. So we discussed, I don't know. Any concerns with eight point two? Here and none. And it looks like eight point three, we did discuss removing this, they removed it. And so then there's a new eight point three. Yes.
Eight point three.
Old or new?
Old, well, and new, with fourteen ninety-one, is that the right thing? I think we're gonna have to. I don't think we have to do it to twenty twenty-nine. But I think we have to, I think by law, we're gonna be required to do this.
So I think this is in addition to what is required by law.
Uh, right, no, this is a new law that went in that says we're gonna have to remove.
Right, but so this policy could be. In addition to what was required by law. Let's continue to reduce parking that now near transit, is that correct?
Right, because if there's a requirement by law, council will have to make code changes. For that, and so the policy is a code change, the policy would be above and beyond what the code change.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm all for that.
Okay, so new eight point three. Looks like minor changes.
Yeah.
Can we see down?
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm a little. Just, just confused by kind of structure, maybe of this policy sets. Of developments that use clean energy or reduced energy consumption. Including affordable. So do we mean edit?
Yeah, why call it out?
All, all developments, including these, I mean, I, it's just a little bit. Yeah, then this, uh, it, it, it doesn't read very well.
Are you saying why call it out versus?
No, not exactly, I really mean set structure right, wait.
Why put it at the end?
incentivize well, what's the, use clean energy or reduce energy.
So don't you stop it just as breaking?
Use of clean energy or reduced energy consumption. In all developing or housing rental.
I know, we mean it to all development?
Yeah.
It just, it calls out those. Specific.
Well, to me, that, that's, that's the problem, it's like the, including means, as if we maybe thought we'd leave those ones out of it.
No, it's just.
So to me, it's.
Other side out of mind, so I read it as. Incentivized developments, comma, including affordable housing and rental units, comma. And then the intent. That's how staff.
That's why, I, I think it's better that way. So. Take that bolded phrase, move it after the word developments, comma.
That way, that's how staff would. Interpret that, or, but.
It just, it just read weird, I, I have no question about the intent, but it could be read to mean something a little bit different, so.
So are we making a change on it?
I think so, so I think what we're proposing. Is to amend it to re-incentivize developments, comma, including affordable housing and rental units, comma. That use clean energy or reduced energy consumption.
So but the, but I think that then has a different meaning, because it, that like. Assumes that when you build a rental unit. That uses clean energy or reduced energy consumption. Because if you word it that way, incentivize developments. Like, so incentivize affordable housing and rent, and rental units. That use clean energy or reduced. Is it, is that use clean energy or reduce? Energy consumption supposed to modify? Affordable housing and rental units, so we're only incentivizing those if they do that?
So incentivize all developments, comma, including affordable housing and rental units. That use, to use, or that use full energy or incentive consumption.
So, and the question is, is do we move including affordable housing and rental units? Up where you just read Yanni, or do we just end the whole thing with a period after consumption? Is what I think Sam's asking.
Yeah.
Like, why call it out? Is it just to be clear that, that it would apply to all? Instead of?
I mean, I didn't offer that addition last time, so I'm not sure exactly what the root of it was, except to, except to maybe.
What's that, I think it's getting.
It's also not explained in the, in, in two columns over. It just treats all, all development, residential and commercial. If anything, maybe the clear thing would be incentivize developments, comma, including residential and commercial. Comma, that used to be energy or reduced energy consumption. And then it would match with the two columns over.
The two columns over part continues on the next page, so there's a little more.
Well, yeah.
It's just, doesn't fairly clarify to. Yeah, if. Reading that. Explanation, it means, let's not leave lower-income rental communities out of this requirement, so that's the reason for the emphasis. So. I could either strike it, or we could put it in there. As I said, which was to say, you know.
I like what you said, yeah.
All. So let, let, let's try that, incentivize all developments. Comma, including affordable housing and rental units. Comma, that use clean energy or reduced energy consumption.
I'm mostly aware about that.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed?
I think it's perfect. Because that's exactly how I read it.
Yeah.
Because I could see somebody saying, did you really mean all? It doesn't pencil out for my affordable housing program.
Mark, are, are you being our documentarian for all of these edits?
For Cascadia, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to check out that.
Yeah, and the tape.
Sam, I don't see anything on twenty-six, so no.
Yeah. In the twenty-seven, and that's it? And then we're, oh, are we then? No, then it's the clean version. And I didn't tick and tie that everything in the red line made it in here, I did a couple spot checks that looked like it did, so.
So we'll just need to incorporate these few changes we made.
Precisely, cascade.
Yeah, yeah.
And do we need to revisit, uh, John's comments?
Yeah, let's talk about John's comments, just because they were in the email, and I wanna make sure that we address them. John had sent the email to everybody about. Do we redo kind of the background data about the proportions of? Greenhouse gas emissions that are attributable to. Driving versus air travel, or do we leave it as Cascadia has proposed, and do we then? If that is, if such a big percentage of the assumed emissions from our community are air travel. Should we have policies that recommend? Or that address, um, reduction in greenhouse gas emissions due to air travel? We did talk about this at the last meeting. Um, and I think. I don't mean to kind of misstate, so if people have a different perspective, my recollection was that. We felt that given the limited resources and size of our town, there wasn't anything meaningfully. That we would be able to influence on air travel or. Um, freight air travel that happens to be affiliated to our community according to regional models of the rest of it. Um, I know that there were calls in the community feedback, and we talked about it. Here at the meeting, that the city might be interested in. Hiring a climate coordinator, somebody who part-time or full-time would be focused on climate coordination. To me, it strikes me that. Even if we had an FTE who was focused on that, which would be great. What could they even do meaningfully of reducing air travel? Or coordination, or would the time be better spent on some of these other policies like interconnected? Multimodal transit within the community to produce, um, single vehicle. Uh, trips, so my sense is, I don't think we need policies on it. Um, and I'm not sure what those policies would be that would be actionable or meaningful in our community. But. I'd love to hear everybody else's thoughts.
I just say, without, without, meaning no, absolutely no disrespect for John's point, I, I get what he's getting at. I don't feel like it's a good use of our time to start. Rejigging this to try to address that. I just feel like we, you know. Or we talked about that in our, you know, work group. Here we are. We should be finishing this, I'm, I'm fairly resistant to kind of. That kind of rejiggering the path. To focus on that, so, and that's if I understand his comment fully, but, so I'm. Respectfully thinking we don't. Change anything.
Can we just? Share his note with Cascadia, and they could consider whether there's a note to put on the chart, or. You know, something else that, which is sort of a, acknowledged the discrepancy or the reality of. What's presented in terms of the data.
The, the intent was at the end of this meeting, I would share this with him, because that's part of the budgeted work. The the intent was at the end of this meeting, I would share this with him cuz that's part of the budget work. Any revisions, if it were significant or substantial, we would have a conversation about where do we go from here? So when I read this, it was hope hoping that discussion would happen tonight. But staff was hoping that it would be consistent with the last meeting of planning commission with C P A discussion. And discussions I've been in K four C and King County. But my perspective is, well, staff doesn't get to set or even vote on policy, so my perspective was more budget oriented and timeline. Because the real request tonight is where, where does the planning commission wanna go after tonight? Uh, so it's more functional and contract related. But the, the. I guess the other scenario is if we hit an issue that wanted to be investigated or changed, then the conversation with Cascadia becomes. Here's the comment, what's your response? Can you return October fourteen? And respond again more specifically.
I think, but to Maddie's point, I think if the consensus here, and we don't know it's the consensus yet. Cuz I'd like to hear Shuri and David and Meredith's view on this as well, and yours as well, Maddie. But if the consensus is that we don't need to have additional policies drafted, perhaps the ask Cascadia is. Could they have a look at John's note and the pie chart that he created? And then in the backup data include their chart, which has all transportation lumped together. But also includes some additional detail about the breakout and the portion that's attributed to air travel, non-road vehicle and the rest of it. Which I think the thrust of this point, cuz he does say he agrees, we can't really control it, we can't really have policies that address it in a meaningful way. It's more of the mis misleading impression in his view that the, that the data in the background section gives. And so I think having a little additional detail in the background section, if they agree that it's active and it's right. That would be the ask, I don't think that has to come back to this group if it's just the background data section.
I mean, I can just see an asterisk that acknowledges that the person is something like worst part is numbers.
Yeah, and therefore having nothing to do with policy at this point, cuz again, right, that's it, it's just that.
Shuri, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Well, let's do that.
So our by consensus, that good for? Yeah, that avoids any sort of other.
Yeah. Yes, we're keeping it on the happy path that we've discussed.
See, I've since. Uh, Councilman Reba wasn't here at the beginning, but we. Before we move on to the next one, business committee back to him.
Yes, yes.
Actually, I don't have anything to pitch around.
Oh, great, ours, we see.
Did you have anything for public comment? Okay.
I know.
I just acknowledge the excellent work you're doing.
So with that, do we need to make a final vote on?
We do, but before we do it, um. I wanna check in, was there anything else? We've kind of breezed through all the edits, we've talked about this at lane. Was there anything else on the policies that people didn't feel was addressed that they wanted to make a motion on? Otherwise, then yes, it will be. In order for us to make a final vote and recommendation. Very nothing.
And it could be a straw, straw vote. He uh, the top, the draft timeline that I have set up with Cascadia involves a public hearing upstairs, October fourteenth. Unless you wanna do a special date. So I think we have a quorum, it's mostly to hear once again from the public. I anticipate that the commission can make a formal recommendation that night, like we did for. It middle housing and conflict. So that has to happen, and tonight with Cascadia was, are we on track for that? Yes, my intent this week, if we are, is to send this to um, Department of Commerce for their sixty day review. And none of those opportunities are you prevented from making changes, they just can't be. Different direction, significant.
So we don't, so what I'm hearing is we don't need to vote to approve this tonight. And it wouldn't be helpful for us to do that.
Um, well, I wouldn't prevent it, I was, you know, quick work is great, if uh, you know, I was anticipating just something that said we're on track. And then I could do my logistical work, but I'm not going to prevent you from doing a formal recommendation tonight if that's what you would like to do.
So we'll, we'll move to declare that we're on track.
And primarily because uh, like we did before, a public hearing at planning commission and a public hearing at city council. And the words in the municipal code are usually anticipated, it's not absolutely required, but this is big enough in this policy conflict. That um, if you don't do it in this, it's a sign of when you would.
All right, does anybody, are we comfortable just indicating that we're on track? Or do people feel comfortable with making a recommendation at this point, subject to the amendments we've just made?
I see that track.
Okay. So is there general consensus to indicate that we're on track?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we've all nodded, we've all agreed. Uh, so then perhaps we'll come at the next meeting, we'll hear from the public hearing if there's anything. Uh, that changes our opinion, and short of that, then hopefully we'll be able to kind of. Not revisit any of the issues we've done, but just adopt it as a recommendation to council. Perfect. All right, so next on the agenda, that was the end of old business nine eight.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I just, I wanna comment, this is wonderful, I want people to think about, and you've already. Probably thought about this, is that when you recommend to council, it's important to describe any areas of differences. Or any areas of emphasis, or any areas of concern. Because it goes a long way to understanding what you thought was important, or what you thought that we should as a council have. More discussion about. Uh, because it's, it's really good when we understand what you're thinking, and we can say to council. There was general consensus, we didn't have a disagreement about what you're recommending, because we've had significant discussion as a planning commission. Then what we're bringing with to you as a recommendation, we are strongly supportive of. We don't have a difference, so, for example, the last work product that you brought forward to us, you said, well, there's some. Items here that there are some sort of differing opinions. Well, then that allows us to focus on those and say. But there's been a lot of otherwise very good discussion, like a consensus, and so. As a council, unless we see something that you just don't really like. We can say, there's been a lot of good discussion about it, so we don't need to be. But a letter or a presentation goes a long way to showing to the council. Areas or areas that you are very supportive of, then you would like the council to adopt them.
That's very helpful, and I think, you know, we can spend a minute now before we move on to the next topic to make sure that we. Have those areas identified, and we can also revisit it next month, if there are areas where we felt there were. Was not quite alignment, one that came out was, how far do we go on? Kind of incentives and policies versus um, kind of mandates and restrictive approaches to. Uh, vehicle trips, um, and also around parking, um, that's one that we've talked about. Uh, here, uh, and last month, we've had some conversations about that, that was an area where we had a lot of robust discussion. Were there other areas that come to mind where we've had a lot of discussion, or where there perhaps wasn't? Uh, complete agreement on this? I think another one was perhaps, you know, the feeling like, you know, we're, we're doing our. Our part to recommendation, to recommend policies that are within the confines of what's been. Uh, imposed on us by state law, by county policy and by regional policy and expectations. So this isn't necessarily what we would have recommended, uh, bespoke to our community if we were starting from whole cloth and with kind of. You know, a different perhaps target than fifty percent greenhouse gas emission production, that's what we talked about tonight and in prior months. Was there anything else? Were there other areas that people recall us not being? Totally uh, on board with all the recommendations or not being totally aligned right out of the gate on?
I don't think so, and and when we, I think it was when we transmitted the conflict, I think it was uh. Uh, Commissioner Alvarez and myself who drafted that, that letter that we sent as kind of the transmittal. Uh, so we could, you know, borrow that as a, just as a, I think it was well received, I don't know, uh, we tried to cut it play out. So. Points where we s- spent some time and uh. Landed on a recommendation, uh, but had some differences in picking. And I think, I think we did, I think we did a good job of creating that, so we sat as a.
And if I recall correctly, I think that was kind of socialized with the commission, as we all kind of had a chance to give feedback or react to it. So we could certainly do something like that this time as well.
Shuri.
It was just my dog. That's barking.
Yes.
So Director Hoffman always does excellent job of describing conversations that here, also spread conversations. Hearing your voice either in a letter or presentation by an individual to come before council. Really is uh, well received. I tell you that the council does read the letters, does take away scenes.
Perfect. Well, let's at least do a letter, and we can also do presentation, do we know the date for when this will come to council?
The the draft timeline that I've worked out for the budget is October fourteenth. Upstairs for the public hearing and formal recommendation, and we're done with the planning commission. And I would then do a first of four touches at city council, a committee of the whole, October twentieth. Where I do my little presentation in background. The very next meeting opportunity, I believe that next Thursday Cascadia would come and give their overall. Uh, consultant presentation similar to C P A planning commission. Then the third touch would be a public hearing, fourth touch hopefully would be. And avoid. The Christmas holiday season at all costs.
So we could also look into sending somebody to the time, uh, that Cascadia comes, that might be the most appropriate. I'd be happy to go if I schedule a screen, or if anybody else would like to go, or they, that would be welcome as well, it would be awesome.
It's currently seven PM the twenty third. October. There's, I don't think there's a work session, but so seven PM is the regular meeting.
Perfect, and just from your perspective, uh, when uh. Commission representative comes for a presentation, is there a particular format for a presentation that usually works? It could just be verbal, do you need slides?
It does.
Showmanship.
No. So there's two parts to it. Um, well, there's three parts to it, one is, it doesn't need to be a formal slide presentation, it can be as simple as, here are the major points that we talked. And then we had a robust discussion, so what we're presenting to you represents a lot of work by the commission to win with them. It is an opportunity to uh, answer questions that might come from council members, and the third is to hear. The appreciation from the council for the work that you're doing. Because, um, that's a. You put a lot of work and effort into this, and sometimes when the council says. Uh, we approve the recommendation of the planning commission, there may be this sort of letdown of, well, why didn't they have this robust discussion? And the answer is because you have.
That makes sense.
So what do we think when they actually reliving their work?
That they have a different opinion and that they're council members.
And that's happening, I'm like, great, I didn't even know that part.
Just, I would have, if you had left the parking one and said, I don't think we wanna leave the parking.
Yeah.
But, you know, those kinds of things, when you look at the overall picture, unless there's something the council has sort of made a U-turn on. Um, it's just a reality of trying to respond to uh. Politics of the community, whereas a commission, you you might have that in your background. Uh, but really what you wanna do is put out there what you think as a community we would want to do.
Yes.
So, think of the council as sort of heading the world of politics.
Well, the council presumably has, you know, visibility to other considerations and policy objectives they're trying to balance, so that's.
But every re- every writer benefits.
This is true. So just a final point, I think one of the things uh, that might be important to acknowledge in this presentation is that. To acknowledge the all the work that preceded bringing it to the commission.
Yes, yes. Of course, terrific. All right, shall we move on to nine B, and I think. Mark, did you have a presentation planned for this?
I did, and my challenge was how to share screen without messing up zoom, uh, here's my experiment.
Oh, wow.
And it worked.
There we go, look at that.
Learning one new tech thing.
And so this is, so if I'm remembering, this is in response to our ask for a focus area where maybe we could make some concrete. Uh, policy recommendations, you were gonna educate us a bit on how do the current street frontage regulations work?
Yeah, perfect, we, at the last meeting, we prioritize very soon, obviously climate element was first. And then this was chosen, I don't wanna characterize it as loading, but one of the simpler, less involved efforts. And so what I wanted to prepare tonight is to uh, share some definition. I thought the best way is just give you this PowerPoint so you have it writing on your laptop, and after tonight, there is no draft ordinance, there is no recommendation. But it's just the beginning, and there's no timeline, um, but uh, I'll ask for feedback at the end. Uh, and with this bar up here, I don't, oh man, that's gonna be a challenge, I wish I had full screen. It's blocked, let's, oh, let me try this.
Yeah, you can move it, I think.
There we go. And this is mostly for after tonight, and remembering how it started, and to bring everyone up to speed, ob- obviously some measures are new. There's elements of the public, the packets and uh, the public realm now, but the purpose. The specific effort is uh, proposed amendments to the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code. Specific to street frontage regulations. Um, and I'll go through the process, talk about some existing definitions to give it context, and also explain what's not in there. And then actually, uh, I have identified these sections of code that are specific to this. Was easier than I thought. Uh, and the the key slide is the discussion, it's the reasons. If we move to an ordinance and do this, and bring this forward with a recommendation and city council, city attorney will review it. And so that it's not arbitrary and capricious, you'll find the recitals and the findings, and that gets asked as to the intent and reasons behind these amendments. Uh, and then any feedback data you have, so that's the purpose tonight. This is the wording slide, it just starts from zero, and the uh, the intent is that this is a type four. Similar to what we did for middle housing, public hearing and recommendation of planning commission, draft ordinance at city council, another public hearing, and then amendment. To the municipal code, this is not comprehensive plan, this is specific to land use and zoning as it applies to. To specific profits. That's, that's our, that's our effort. And the commission already knows that, but it it gives that background context, so I thought I would start with some definitions that are already in municipal code. So that we're all on the same page, cuz I I don't have a whiteboard, I can't do. Uh, you know, those stick figures that here's a lot, here's. The front setback and so forth, so we'll start with what's already in the code. This is our existing definition of a lot in the zoning uh, planning chapter. Um, and it was not modified as part of, you know, lots subdivision and middle housing. One little tidbit gold nugget, if one or more lots are built upon as a unit, let's say one owner owns four, we run into that a lot. They built one house that overlaps the internal property line forty, sixty years later, they sell one lot. And somebody complains about why is that detailed structure on the property line? It's because of that something. So it just adds a background, it's not specific to street. Lot area, not specific to street front. Lot width is a dimension. Uh, and all the single family zones have minimum lot widths, but that's not what this effort is. So lot lines kind of give you context of how, what the code calls for, on how to shape, or what the future lot design should be. None of this mentions street frontage, pan handles, flag lots. None of this mentions street frontage, pan handles, flag lots, easements. This is exactly how it's worded in code. So this most of our context and you can refer back as you do your research and. Get through this effort to these codes sections, so and each of you have this in your inbox. Now we get to. The last two definitions, pan handle, there is a definition pan metal, but there are no provisions for pan metal. Uh, but the definition is, it definition is in there, streets in there. This next one in title seventeen is the subdivision ordinance, the red is the modification that was done. Uh, for middle housing in ADUs. So you started down this road by making this amendment. If you take away the red, the black represents what is in municipal code in that section today. But that's it, that's where we stopped, everything else was left for the future. Little uh, subnote, there is no existing definition for street fronts. Now we get to what would this effort consist of, and it's pretty straightforward, there are three zones, the larger. Uh, minimum lot zones that have a, a minimum street frontage required, there they are. The R, R twenty, R fifteen and R ten. None of the other zoning districts happen. So one of the thoughts when we started this was, oh no, we've done two short flats that had a pan handle and two back lots. And were innovatively designed to part two lots back there, my fear was we weren't aware of this. But they were in our, our nine point six. So that uh, inconsistency, inconsistency doesn't exist. As far as. So these three sections are in the code right now and would be the subject. Of our effort and possible amendment as the funny question was that.
Hey Mark. Yeah, if we go back to that slide, so when we have these. Citations, do we read that correctly to say this was originally put in in ninety-nine and then maybe it was modified this year?
Yeah, I normally leave them out, but that's how, the way the code reads, if somebody wanted to do a deep dive. How did this start? When did the city incorporate? When was the ordinance? When did this language come in? And when could it have been amended? These uh, parentheses contain that history. So most of, or all of these started with the adoption of the unified code by ordinance seventy-seven-three. And so in looking at that ordinance, it just merely creates this language.
But none of these pursued a, a property owner from having a flag. Full lot, like being able to apply. To apply for right, I mean, I've seen him in our community where a property is eligible for subdivision. But the other, the division that's the other parcel in the back, if they get any easement that a flag pull. We had one on twenty-eighth where their easement is actually through an area they didn't put the drive or, I'm sorry, their property, the flag pull piece. They didn't actually convert to driveway, that stayed wild. Yeah. And they've got an easement for the neighbor to use, so I don't understand, i- if you can do that. I, maybe, are you gonna?
The majority of the city in that regard was to vote before this code existed. Sixty, seventies, eighties, and I have not done the research back to what was the.
Subdivided before that and so they were eligible, because that was built in the last ten years. And so you're thinking, but they subdivide.
That was my worry, it's probably, uh, what my hope is that it's the R nine point six or the R seven point two. If it, if it existed since nineteen, or if it. If it was created since nineteen ninety-nine. My hope it's in the other zone. If it's in the R twenty.
It wasn't a big.
The R fifteen and R ten.
It's a, it's a R twenty.
We would have to look at it and then the, the issue could be, did, was staff even aware? The one ambiguity that I see in this code is it doesn't talk. Clearly about pan handles, flag lots or easements. Doesn't prohibit them, wouldn't talk about it. But what's clear is these standards exist, and so as a planner, I would review a flat, short flat. And need to apply this sentence, and if the two back lots didn't have a street frontage, I would say this prevents it. What I can't confirm, and I hope I don't have to. Is were any done and recorded and subdivided in here. We would not go back, um, but my hope is that that wasn't a, these are pretty prominent in the zoning code.
I'll send you the address of two, one's on twenty-fifth and one's on twenty-eighth that are within the last ten years, one's actually current.
Uh, were they actual lots or did they get an easement?
The one up on twenty-fifth is, was one whole lot with a single family on the front and they subdivided it on the back. They turned it into two, and now it's two houses, but they drive down the driveway, the house in front.
So that's, I guess that's what I'm asking. You could probably, if you had a cooperative neighbor who would sell you an easement, you may, you. Could do that to get around this, I think.
That's what's unclear is how do you get around that?
You have a seventy-five foot wide driveway is what you get. And so our effort is to clarify, so this ambiguity doesn't exist. If that's the intent. Uh, and I can't speak to the intent of why these three. You know, I, I cannot convey why they, they exist, they do. I, I can guess at the impact. I can visualize the, what the change would result in. Well, but in some regard, if we do this ever, the past is the past. And I know there are many in the city. With very weird configurations, easements. Angular driveways that go through critical areas to reach a bad spot, and I, I just can't speak to the past. But I'm willing to verify each and every one, because I am curious.
Yeah.
The two that I thought of luckily were in the smaller zones. That's, that's why I perceive this, but I, and I'll stop, also it doesn't want to go. That's under our ten. So the next slide is the last section where it appears, this is in the subdivision chapter or title seventeen. Uh, this was not changed in ordinance thirteen oh nine. So I did a word search and, and for whatever reason, under boundary line adjustment, there it is. So, the, the three. Highlighted areas on this screen. The one highlighted area here. Represent what I've seen so far in the code related to street frontage.
Mark, would this portion be for all lots regardless of zone? Potentially.
Potentially.
It's a mystery.
Luckily, I'm not implementing it based on an application I have in my lab, so. But our goal is to. Review it and amend it so that it is clear. And decide what the intent should be.
So, because if you read those, the prior slide of this, the prior slide suggests it's only three zoned areas where there's a minimum. Yeah, but. When you read this, it makes it sound like the entire city. All lots of.
It could be taken that way, yeah. If the city acted on an application based on section D, we certainly could insult the attorney. One possibility that I would argue if I were an applicant planner is, your code doesn't talk about easements at all. The front lot has a, a hundred foot frontage and it has an easement to the back lot, so I have a. The code is silent, and so we would have to choose the least worst. Interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, that, maybe you could reconcile it by saying this is about lot line adjustments, since that's the section.
Yeah, and further on down the road for the city attorney. Our code is very weak to silent on boundary line adjustments, that's what this se- section is, this is all we have. And other than a fee in our fee resolution. It, it, it kicks it back to RCW and, you know, um, state, state code, so. That's a cleanup that we plan later. But this section D is specific to the upper rego. Which gets to the key slide. If we do this, those are the sections, the definitions, we could certainly augment or add or clarity wherever you. Think that should go. But the purpose of this effort and when I write into an ordinance. As we proceed forward to a public hearing and suggest these amendments. This is what I came up with as to why we're doing this, this is just rapid. It's not for. Me to say, you should think this, but.
No, but I, I do want to add on to this, that when we um, worked on ADU code. It was before the new state laws came into play and we could not write anything about. Easements or access. Uh, and I think it's problematic now, if you're going to be able to sell your ADU or DADU. That we go back and, and, and address that within our code. It was a condition that we didn't. Write in because it was going to be your property. Or your property, but if you're going to sell it, now it's going to become somebody else's and how, where do they get legal access? Um, into that and, and for existing DAUs or ADUs that don't have. Access, how, how is that going to be handled? Uh, within code or. On county record, I mean, it could be problematic. If you don't have legal access to a property purchased.
It, well, it would never be signed, stamped and recorded at King County.
What would not be signed stamped?
The, the short platter block. In most cases here, the short platter. Or lots or less.
You in my backyard and I did not provide and I wanted to sell it, now I just want to find.
Yeah.
Um, duplex, whatever, however, there's states looking at it. How would that person who bought it have, where would they get legal access?
On the, in the old days, it was the short flat and the notes on there that need that easement. Whatever the instrument is, needs to be shown over the platform. Then we have this weird condominium minimization that you've always been able to do, that's not a city effort. And then now we have unit lot subdivision where you own the dirt underneath it, the footprint. But that unit lot subdivision needs to show the common areas, the single use areas, et cetera.
I see, so I couldn't sell a DADU until I had gone through the process to get all of that reported with the county.
Yeah.
To document that I own the dirt under this house and you're going to own the dirt under this house, and these are going to be the common areas, I see.
For you to use it, it's, it's likely to be unit lot subdivision.
But not a subdivision of the underlying property, they'd be forced into a condoization effectively, not a short.
Yeah, in order to sell, now they could always sell it, doesn't mean it's illegal. But for legal access and legal unit lot subdivision, you can sell it.
But they should, the easement would still be the question.
But I, yeah.
But it sounds like if they follow the law, they're going to have to document.
Right.
That access, but I think we're going to need to think about that for fire and safety. We didn't consider that previously because we assumed it was this.
Yeah, and those are elements that are entirely missing from the code, once you go down that route. Whether it's privacy setbacks, access, you need to start defining or modeling. Those other options. If you allow a pan handle flag lot that goes. Three inches past someone's kitchen window. You know, do you want to add a diagram with a setback return? Those things are just entirely missing. We can get there, every code out, it's just ours, it's, didn't anticipate it.
So are we just exploring what it would look like and what would have to be touched and done if we were to change this? Policy as it sits on our books right now?
Which I'm not getting. And then as an effort. I guess how far, how complete?
That would be getting into our, our basic code that affects all buildings in our town, right, whether it's a senior building, home or duplex. Uh, yeah, gotcha.
Guess what, what I see missing maybe from this slide as kind of one of the reasons. And one of the things I raised in my memo that I wrote about this is that. It's, it, it, there's no record of a, what I think is a, I guess I'd say a legit, legitimate public purpose for this arbitrary seventy-five foot thing. And you're really. Someone who buys a lot, if they haven't gone, you know, looking into the code at everything. They think they have a subdividable lot based on the zoning. So you have a forty thousand square foot lot in the R twenty, you're like, oh man, someday. I could buy this into two, right? Like, that's just zoning, that's just math. But, oh, I have a weird shaped lot and I can't. Get two seventy-five foot lots because I don't have two, I don't have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. So you've just kind of taken away that owner's ability to subdivide per zoning code.
Well, those pushback because there is a flag pull mechanism and, and, and so. Not saying I shouldn't change that, but I think uh, there's still some additional due diligence to find out what the mechanisms were that allowed for. Flag pulls, because that's what.
Black lots.
Black, yeah, black lots, that's what I'm doing, black lots. Um. That hasn't been discovered yet, and so then do we take that away or do we just make? Which is easier, like if, if seventy-five, I'm thinking of what we just said about modeling and is it easier to say, okay? These are the terms. But you have this alternative pathway, but it's got to meet certain conditions that are, you know, are unique, I think it would be. Hard to program that for the whole city to say like. Thirty feet enough or forty feet's enough, or like, you know, I don't know what the right number is if it's not seventy-five. Um. But it seems like if it's not seventy-five, that it gives the city some opportunity, say, based on the. Certain other conditions of that property, you absolutely can subdivide. In this way, because you have access for fire, safety, you know, uh, gas lines, whatever the case may be. Almost like having that larger number, I'm just guessing, gives the city some more autonomy in evaluating. Uh. All the strange properties that we have in our community, it doesn't stop the homeowner. From subdividing, it just. Allows the city to come in and, and exercise a little oversight.
Well, city has oversight and you still have to build lots to have. You know, access for emergency vehicles, you don't get or get to go around other parts of the code. If, like, why is this just in these big zones? I think it's pretty clear. When the city. And the city annexed these areas, they just didn't want to see more subdivision of these big lots, period. The council at that time. But it's hard to see any other purpose for this seventy-five now. There are lots of lots that are flags, I know that, my neighbors have a flag lot. Looks great, their driveway, and it is a lot, it's not an easement, it's probably. Maybe fifteen feet, like just a wide driveway. Um. I don't see what's wrong with that, but clearly this code was put in to stop any more of that happening. So. It just, I just don't get the public purpose. It was in eighties.
But this code came into play in nineteen ninety-nine, so somebody in nineteen ninety-nine said no thanks. Then, if your assumption is right, just assumptions, we don't know.
Right.
You're saying you believe. That in nineteen ninety-nine, they put these uh, minimum street frontages in to prevent. Or reduce subdivision opportunities.
In our biggest lot zones, correct.
I would like to find out for the two addresses I just sent you, if you discover and looking at those specific ones, if you've been in front of the mechanism. That a lot will happen, so that, yeah.
Mark, how would we get a copy of that old ordinance from nineteen ninety-nine, ordinance seven seventy-three? It looks like it's before.
I could give it to you, but it, it's, and, and the, the. Code section may have existed in King County, may have existed in the city when it was added. But this nineteen ninety-nine ordinance was a unified development. I mean, we know at least that's a starting point, if the mission is, where did this even? Where was this originated and why? That's a long circuit. But in nineteen ninety-nine, whatever was in existence. That needed to be unified was brought into one code, and so seven seventy-three has an attachment exhibit A, that's huge, it's the whole code. So, but it's, it's on the city, uh. It's on the city webpages, but it's not quickly attainable, it might be emailable, I have it. So I get it from our city electronic, I could share that. And thirteen ten with you. And that could give some contents. Exactly, and that's that one change.
If you didn't mind sharing the seven seventy-three, if you have a digital copy, that would be great.
And similar, uh. What this one should say. This, uh, this red, oh, it does say, that was thirteen on that.
So I could share all three of those.
Yeah, my interest is not in spending a lot of energy figuring out why they did that in ninety-nine or ninety-eight or ninety-seven. It's that this does not help us with middle housing. And. It sure seems unfair. To treat these three zones differently than other zones. Where you could subdivide as long as you've got enough square footage, hey, why these?
You're saying subdivide as long as, like, if you have forty thousand square foot lot and you're in our twenty zone. You have forty thousand square foot lot that, that only has a seventy-five foot. Uh, public right of way.
Or less than a hundred and fifty foot.
Yeah, I'm fundamentally opposed to that, but if we are going to go into existing code sections that govern everything, I'd love to know the mechanism by which we. I think it's great that we're talking about this, but I'd also like to bring up another piece. I think it's great that we're talking about this, but I'd also like to bring up another piece that I think serves on that. As a companion to this on the other end and um. It's uh for our side uh side yards. And right now, if you have, you have to maintain fifteen feet total, right, a minimum of five feet on one side. Uh but we don't have any restrictions on linear feet that you can run down. Uh a property line, nor do we have any requirements for step backs up top. And I can send you guys the address, but there's a house on the way to Grace Pole and I mentioned it before. And man, those people came right in and they, if they're five feet off the line, they're barely five feet off the line. And actually to build their house, they had to just completely tear down their neighbors, I mean. Ladders and stuff, and she was sitting there going, what's happening, and the city wouldn't intervene, and so her whole backyard just got smashed. And now she's got this long house, that if you look at it, there's tons of side yard on the other side, they weren't squeezed for space. Now she's got this massive, long structure, structure running on her back property line. Just all on her patio and. You know, taking away some of personal exposure, and so I would love to revisit, especially if we're going to be having more multifamily that are. Building to the full thirty foot height with flat roofs. That we find some way of saying, if you're gonna be right at five feet off of the property line, that you're required. To do maybe step backs on those upper floors, so. That that's part of the same code too, not this code code, but their our basic. Chapter eighteen code. Uh so I'd like to be able to figure out how to. What? What I need to do as commissioner to bring that to for for discussion as well, if we're gonna start changing our underlying code.
So so I'm good with that, um. I I just want us, I would want us to keep it within the conversation of, you know, what? The purpose that we're having these conversations is because of more uh. Uh to increase the diversity of housing, this. Right, and there's some conditions that we can address at the same time.
Intended consequences.
Exactly.
Unintended consequences, you may have perfectly developable property that meets middle housing goals. Unintended consequence, you've got now more of this sort of unneighborly. Situation that looks a lot like what we're seeing in Ballard, which is just mats and bulbs. Over the top of another house, and uh I think there's some things that we should do based on to. You know, mitigate that to a degree.
Yes, council member, Leo, what what's council's preference about getting, let's say. I'm gonna call this particular topic of seventy five frontage as kind of a surgical. You know, code change recommendation, maybe, if we get there, compared to like a giant package. Like all kinds of stuff. I'm just curious what you.
So the council want to understand why you think this is something should be addressed as a singular element as. The council will be concerned about what are the negative impacts of big change. For example, you mentioned. One rationale for the seventy five foot uh. Frontage is not allowing. If that effect that is representative, oh, the council's gonna wanna know, where does the bubble land up? Do they care? Do they like black blocks, do they not like black? So the council will be reticent. Make a change without understanding the. Impacts of that change. So. Uh the clearly wanna know, what is the the advantage? What do you see is the downside? Is one of the things about the property sizes and lot sizes and some of the other requirements. One could say that they were built to make development restricted. I want a community that has ten thousand square. I want a community that has twenty thousand. Because I don't want small lots, because that changes the character. Doesn't have anything to do with public safety.
And I guess the the argument, for the reason I've raised this one is that. This is in fact saying, even though you're selling twenty thousand, we actually prefer thirty thousand, we actually prefer forty thousand. And that's treating those zones differently than other zones, where they can subdivide as long as they have the square footage.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that's that'll be interesting to spend some time on as we kind of dive into this is maybe. One of the mediums, we can kind of look at some maps, when I look at the city maps on where these zones are. And then like tree canopy coverage, for example, our highest percentage of tree canopy coverage lots are in so. So that's another thing that you would wanna put at the parking lot with Maddie's topic of unintended consequences, that if we make it easier to develop these lots. By removing these restrictions. How do we feel and how does the community feel about the potential for fewer uh? Lots that are meeting the higher tree canopy coverage metrics.
I mean, it could just be, it may only be those two items, but it could be other guys of like, we've considered our like code. And looked for unintended consequences, you know, that would negatively impact. You know, a number of things in our community. Above us is, I would put that, I would put a laundry of this, but. We can start thinking about what what are some of the other, you know, pieces um. Like uh. With increased density, how do we do that in a way that? Is that more gentle info and and respects, you know, housing structures that are already there so that you don't have that. Domino effect we're seeing in Ballard, which is that people just are frustrated, and I now have, you know, four houses that are just like ginormous and I have just. I I feel, you know, shut out of my community, and I don't feel like. We should leave current residents in a position where they have to feel apologetic because they like sunshine in their kitchen window and. They like having, you know, the tree canopy and home seat up protected, so I I I do think that we do have to think about our existing code and. And consider. What the unintended consequences will be of our code that was designed for single family homes would look like. With multi-family.
So. So. I'm actually. This is one of the middle housing ideas that I prefer. Because not um, no, no. Not to make it fair, because I kind of feel like if you bought the property. Those were just the conditions, but. Kind of what you were saying, I actually think this fits it very well, because these lots. Are already twice the size of what the city says, you know, so these are really large lots, so actually if we are making. These lots subdividable. The, I think that. That the end result will be. More of the same feel. Of Lake Forest Park than trying to cram more on smaller lots, if that makes sense, because these these larger lots are already twice the size that they need to be. So a single family home could be put on them. And then it still continues to feel. You know, to be. And you have the same feel as opposed to. Putting more houses on smaller lots, and that makes sense.
I agree with you, but the reality is, to Yani's point, if you had a property that was uh forty thousand, that nature. And you live in a R R twenty, that you could split that into two parcels, which means you could build. Four total houses there. It, when you set up, are we saying the same thing, like, the minute you subdivide it, instead of being able to build two houses on your forty thousand square foot lot. You could, once you did the paperwork, you can now build two houses on this twenty thousand square foot lot, two houses on this twenty thousand.
You could build. Well, you could, you could only, you could only build a duplex. On each, right, or a single family with an A D U and.
And attached, right.
What?
And a detached. So you could get the single family plus an attached dwelling unit plus detached.
You could technically have six units on those two parcels.
I guess uh my question is, if not here, then where, you know, if not on these big lots, then where? Would, would they go?
Yeah, I I I would have a sense, I mean, yeah, I happen to live on one of the big lots, but if I were in, say, ninety six hundred, seventy two hundred. And I understood that, boy, those big lots aren't gonna face any of the pressure to absorb the new housing that the state laws making us do, it's all gonna come into these. Smaller lots, I don't know, that doesn't seem fair either.
Yeah, I disagree with you on that at all, not at all, but I do, uh I do recognize that a lot of the big lots are. Have critical areas, and I think some of yours do as well, and so I I would just again, to avoid unintended consequences. Move very carefully in evaluating whether or not just to lift that, or whether to lift it with a condition that if if you're on a steep slope or wetland, I mean, we have. You know, streets nearby us, lots of surface springs, and I feel really. Reticent about saying, ah, sure, let's just build three houses on that, you know, steep slope and. Surface springs, I think it puts in fact a load on some of the properties that were. That I think did drive some of the decision making on the big lots, I mean, I have a half an acre, I. I can build three units on it, you know, just by converting what I have today, it's. You know, there, there are all those possibilities, but I I do want us to be cautious to not.
Right, right now staff has it just covered with what we did with mental housing and A D Us. And that no negative effect or amendments are proposed for critical areas traits. So if we can, if we just examine the street frontage, we still have minimum lot area setbacks. Not part of this. So if we examine the street frontage and take that away with the intent of no. Critical area tree regulations, they they need an action or sick or a decision by the city. And we can do that exercise to make sure that when that happens. No new lot that negatively impacts critical area trees first.
Right.
And then. Do the scenarios to make sure. There are no unintended consequences.
So what are our next steps? Right, according to. So I think the next steps from this presentation are for us to think about um whether there are. Policy, not policy changes, but code changes we want to make to any of those three zones. Uh that have very clearly the minimum lot uh street frontage requirement. Um and if so, what those would look like. And I think, you know, we've heard a lot of it from Mark, that he's not going to make the the policy and the code recommendations, but staff will help if we have a direction for. Uh what substantively you would like to see changed.
So so can we actually write a purpose statement for the work that we're going to pursue with this? So that we can all share and kind of agree on it when at the next, next meeting. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we could do that, I I I don't know how to define that that purpose.
Well, I think you were just defining.
Yeah, I I mean, the purpose is have a discussion here and land on, are there code changes we wanna see on this, and I don't know if there's consensus among this group that there are.
So codes are often developed because you see a need, and the need could be either a desire. Uh positive up. Or the result of a negative uh issue. So you write a code that says, I want to, I want to essentially prevent that from happening because of the negative consequences, cutting down all the trees. Or I want to write code because it's desirable to incentivize housing of these kinds of lots. Where the code could encourage them. So I would. Suggest you say, what is the problem you're trying to address, is it a negative consequence that you want to prevent? Or is it a positive uh result that you're looking for in the code to address it now? One of the things the council will ask is, well, what do you mean the code doesn't address? I don't understand, are they allowed or are they not allowed? That would be a question. So I would encourage you to say, what is the problem that we're trying to address, it's either negative or positive. Cause if you don't have a need, don't go looking for a solution for a problem.
I think that's a good point.
And the most recent, the newest need was this uh came out of the discussions for that allows it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not passing judgment.
I don't think you should, oh, I hear you, no, that's good, that's good, counsel, just to be clear about why we wanna see.
And I guess. There's maybe a little more fact finding to Maddie's point of in some of these. Twenty fifteen and ten zones, R twenty, R fifteen, R ten. I'll have some of the flagpole. Lots that have happened in recent years been allowed. And I've got another example here of these ones right next to the elementary school. And that development just happened about four years ago.
Well, now, keep in mind, the subdivision creation of a lot often. Proceeds the visual development by decades.
Ah, okay.
So um I don't mind doing research. I'm most interested in, did we do it, did I sign anything wrong? Or in the last five, ten years, have we been ignoring code? But the further back you get to intent, the more that research takes away from the actual.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair.
Uh and and the history's not always clear, we have the plots. But the time consuming is what has happened to that property over time, flat to flat to flat, so I could do examples, but I certainly do not wanna do.
Yeah, and I guess the point is, there there isn't a mechanism in the code that's clear that allows it when we have those provisions that say there has to be.
Yeah, and I'm not faced with it, so if I were faced with it, and somebody said, I have a twenty foot easement, so the seventy five foot frontage. And the city's gonna tell me no, I'm gonna say, we're not telling you anything until you apply, and I talked to the city attorney. Turned up, and for we're fortunate that I don't have one of those right now, so I'd like to approach it that way, but I don't like scenarios and getting it right. Or using test cases or examples, those are no problem.
So I guess we can discuss now, like, is there consensus that for that problem statement and? That the council members uh suggestion. Is the problem statement that we think. We ought to have uh or incentivize uh the types of. Middle housing and development in these ten fifteen and twenty zones, is that the statement we want to be working towards? For an ordinance uh and code amendments that would address that and allow that. Because this is a barrier, as we've talked about quite a bit, the seventy five foot frontage does essentially. Prohibit development in on many of these lots. Or not, do we need to think about that and come back next month, is there consensus that? That's something we should be working.
I mean, I mean, I'd be happy to draft something for consideration around witnesses.
Okay.
But knowing that I will almost certainly miss the October meeting, but that doesn't mean I'm not willing to. Put it out for a round of. You know.
And I would argue, so your point is still valid, even if we weren't trying to find, you know, ways to put more metal housing in, I mean, it still is. A lot that's divisible by size and can provide more housing inventory. Um so, regardless, I think, like in terms of a purpose statement, it's it's a meaningful change. Regardless of where we are with housing in our state right now.
Yeah, I think there's, I I can probably articulate pretty quickly kind of two or three statements for consideration that. You know, one being, yes, we. Like to see, you know. More opportunities for little housing, one is maybe there's a statement about fairness, you know, which how some neighborhoods are gonna be expected to. Absorb more future growth than than zoning would otherwise allow because of this. To me, that's. That's a reason, if we care about, you know, sort of fairness among. Our neighborhoods.
I I and I don't think God is concerned about the reasons, because I think uh Mark, you you've addressed some of those, but in addition to my speaker. I think that's a good one, right, to add to that list, I I'm more concerned about like what is our objective movement for? You know, what's, not the wise much, but like, what is it that we're we're trying to do for, yeah.
Striking.
And if, but it. But if we strike him, but to Mark's point earlier, what? What does it say, and what kind of modeling is gonna be required, you know? I don't know what your kitchen window situation was, but it's, you know, that kind of thing, I think we have to think about if it's not this. What other problems does it potentially create, how do we mitigate that so that we can right size it?
Yeah, I guess I just feel like it would just, those zones would be treated the way the other zones are, and if we need to make fixes citywide, well, that's. Like you raised some really good examples of things we ought to wrestle with that are maybe a little more complicated, like the side yard and all that stuff. But from a frontage perspective, this would just be treating these zones the way other ones are.
Which, but but it seems like there's some missing pieces in there too, like that we should wrestle, but it's like, there's no restriction. But we probably ought to be wrestling with. Okay, if if you're gonna provide this easement. Okay, if if you're gonna provide this easement or this access or put a flag lot, you know, on a smaller. Property that I don't know that we have provisions in place that ensure. I mean, that's gonna be a forever thing now, right? Like. Once it's done, somebody's stuck with it. And I know just for those of us who've spent time in California, there's some crazy stuff that. I don't, you know, is permanent now. That affects, I I have been living in a house that a fire truck couldn't get to.
But it's doable. So in that context, there are plenty of examples and we are granting. Development, we're not taking away. So in that context, I feel freer to grab. Examples of code uh for flag lots and setbacks from flag lots. How to keep the car driving down the driveway away from your bed.
Yeah.
Those we don't have to create. We I just have to incorporate at your discretion.
Um so for, I I know I introduced a new idea, should I do the same thing and create kind of a statement of purpose to find a problem? And and do that for this other piece.
Yeah, maybe.
All of us to look at that, just the basic building code do and think, okay, given the changes in housing policy in our city and some of our goals. What are the other conditions that govern building on our lots that maybe we need to revisit like our EDU code?
Maybe you could share that and if you could share your proposal and we could kind of react to it.
Yeah. Next month. All right, I didn't speak over. I was gonna say that I think. I think you're 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 on to something really important, which is that both the middle housing changes, especially the state mandated ones about. Being able to sell off things. I think. We're now starting to realize all the other things in our code that we might need to address, right? So I think that'll be a list. I think that'll end up being quite a list, but I I totally support. You framing that one up that you've raised. Uh but that may go on to our like work plan. And right now, this one will at least try to get where we can. You know, if if the commission breathes to like, let's get this one either done or ready to. Have changes, you know, then we move on to the next issue, right?
Consider.
Even if we don't submit till later, if you wanna submit them later so that council gets a package of coherent things, okay? Or we set this one up.
Sure.
By itself. If we all agree.
Good news is there are no mandated deadlines.
Deadlines or timelines on this.
This is entirely in your control.
I wanna do a time check, cause we're a few minutes before the scheduled agenda. Um the only other piece of old business from last month, I had shared a a proposal of some text uh by email. Uh for Mark to use to reach out to uh the Affordable Housing Advocacy Group and a developer stakeholder. To come and share with us some perspectives. Yana had shared um a good point by email. Um I think if we take his input and if we take what I proposed, was there anything else that people felt needed to? Change or could we have Mark run with that at the appropriate time uh for outreach?
Uh and I guess I would just, since it was an email, so I'll just state for the for the record. That the uh suggestion you provided around how we might approach kind of a residential developer for some perspectives. You know, one of the things we talked about quite a bit during middle housing as we were finishing that up was. We need to understand like what what types of, you know, whether it's density or whatever. Would actually incentivize things like cottage house, like small scale detached. And I just wanted to separate that from like capital A affordability, right? So those those will be less expensive houses, but it's not about. Income threshold or working with a nonprofit necessarily. It's about. Understanding from a developer's perspective, what would our code need to look like to actually? Lead to some small, you know, small home.
The types of middle housing that we.
It was just to endorse inch a little away from affordability to small scale. So that was, that's, that was my recommendation.
I totally agree with that. It kind of tracks of where we've all discussed.
So the little A P K, yeah, I agree.
All right, so we'll go with, we'll go with that unless anybody else had.
I'd be, thanks for doing that, Sam.
Yeah, yeah. And then Mark, leave it to your discretion of like when you do the outreach and with our timeline and everything, but uh it'd be good if we have those meetings in. Before too long, cause we've heard.
Okay. And you, you had somebody in mind from one perspective.
Well, yeah, yeah, I just, I mean, I just mentioned I was in a conversation over the weekend and. I've shared here before that I was on a different planning commission years ago. And I know we took some planning commission tours to go look at stuff. So I'd like to understand if we could. Do that, what the rules are around that, because there's no better way to see what different scale develops look like than going out. And looking at that with somebody who can kind of point and. Explain kind of how they did it, whether it's in our jurisdiction or neighboring, so.
I vote that we go on a trip to Portland. But Portland though has the cutest little. Little neighborhood that has just these right-sized houses and, you know, it's been laid out their master plan, so it's nice.
Well, if the commission can't go, I volunteer to go take. On a weekday during the day. I love it. Yeah, all right. This, um as far as background goes, that's fair game. There's a lot of law in Idaho. I haven't done it in Washington, but also we don't have an application, so it's not a public hearing. There is no applicant we need to consider due process, but I would offer, all we need to do is notice a public meeting for that purpose. Negative.
Got it. There you go. Look at man and a developer. You know, snacks.
Yeah, we'll have to figure it out now. All right, new business. Was there any new business anybody have? Other than our field trip, reports and announcements. No groups now. All right, additional public comment, there is none agenda for next meeting. Um which we have, which will be a continuation of what we've been talking about, yes?
I would love to at some point talk about fourteen ninety-one, cause I read it and I was like, oh. That has a lot. And it and coming off of our planning. Uh that we've been doing, it feels like, oh, never mind, here we now we have a change. It it sounds like we're still gonna have to look back in in the next couple of years and redo stuff that's within a half mile.
Definitely. But I would say wait a little while at planning commission, cause at the committee of the whole. They're gonna have a conversation about parking in general, which haystack should we start? Where is that on earth? We have a little, we're affordable, a little bit more time of your less. It may be. Prioritize it, which is a good reminder. The twenty twenty-six work on plans. December, January. When is the discussion, the committee of the whole on the new state law for?
I can't characterize it, but council member Goldman, I think, is pitching it up as let's have a beginning discussion.
Yeah, I think it's not state law. I think it's in line of proper, I believe, the parking requirements and.
Yeah.
Somebody else like, maybe we should do that. There is one, at least one person in the community who's saying. We should get rid of all parking requirements, but generalized national data says parking is really like, like, you know, the new. Signal for NIMBYism and um. And anyway, I have very strong feelings about that, so.
So.
So that's it.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
So all those in favor? Hosts, we are adjourned at nine oh three. We ran exactly two hours, because we started three minutes.
I wanna unofficially vote uh for Sam to have a chair um on on this, a new tag that's just here.
We don't need to take chair back. Any more effort on these things. Thank you all, thank you.